And welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is November 19th, it's 5:30 PM. The first presentation is a recognition of the employee of the third quarter. Councilmember Thornton will present the certificate to Felicia London.
You got your notes on your phone? Tonight, we would like to take a moment to recognize our employee of the third quarter 2019, Felicia London. Felicia, oh, you're already here. Felicia has been employed with the City of Moreno Valley since October 2010 to present. She currently serves as the Public Safety Contracts Administrator for the City of Moreno Valley, Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department, and Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Over the last two years, she has developed a vast knowledge of the administrator needs for both the Fire Department and Police Department. She has also developed great interdepartmental relationships and has committed to her position by making herself available to both departments whenever necessary. In addition to her great work ethic and commitment to her position, Felicia also assists each department with the annual community events. This includes events such as National Night Out, Fourth of July Fun Fest and Parade, Spark a Love, and Holiday Cheer Parade. Her dedication to the city is quickly recognizable through her high level of customer service. As a resident of Moreno Valley, she holds vested interests in the positive impact to the community. Felicia, it is my pleasure to present you with this plaque and recognition for your being named Employee of the Quarter for the third quarter 2019. Congratulations and thank you. All right. Here tonight is Mr. Tom DeSantis, our City Manager, who, would you like to share a couple of thoughts on her achievements?
I would, thank you. Good evening, good evening Felicia and Felicia's family. I just want to say a couple of things. What makes this award even more significant is that Felicia is Moreno Valley's first ever Public Safety Contracts Administrator. It's a brand-new position, and Felicia's the first one to serve in that capacity. She jumped right in to a very complex assignment, making herself very quickly invaluable to my office, our finance staff, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. She brought significant background on the police contract with her, but she had to learn fire operations on the fly, and that is really significant. And what makes this award particularly meaningful is that selection is made by other city employees. And so, it's basically previous award winners select who the employee of the quarter will be. So, being recognized by one's peers means a great deal, as does recognition tonight by the City Council. So, I'd like to join the Council in congratulating Felicia and her family on her being named Employee of the Quarter.
Awesome. Felicia?
Good evening, thank you. I will be brief. I would just like to first start off by saying a thank you to my family, my husband, Orande, my two kids, Jaden and London back there, Jaden and Carter, I'm sorry. I would like to just basically say that I really truly appreciate you guys for giving me the support I've needed over the years while I've been, you know, trying to reach my career endeavors, and I love you guys just for giving me the support that I've needed. But I also would like to acknowledge that, and thank you to the team here, you know, I couldn't do what it is that I do here without the team that actually supports me. And I know that Fire, and both Fire and Police, and the City Manager's Office provide a lot of support to me in helping me do the job that I do here every day. So, I thank you guys so much, and I really appreciate the nomination and the acknowledgement. So, thank you.
Congratulations Felicia London. Let's give her another round of applause. The second presentation is recognition of the classified employee of the second quarter. Councilmember Cabrera will present a certificate to OA Sarah Tranham.
Good evening. Tonight, we would also like to recognize the Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee of the Second Quarter, Sarah Tranham. Sarah recently promoted to Office Assistant Three and DA Liaison. She is a great role model here who always brings the best version of herself to the workplace, setting an example for everyone. And Sarah goes above and beyond what is required of her on a daily basis. She's an active listener with great problem-solving skills that go a long way when working directly with the public. Most importantly, she is a team player and reassuring when helping others. Sarah, you're extremely important, and you're a vital part of the operation here for Moreno Valley Police Department. We thank you for your dedication to our city, and we want to congratulate you on behalf of the City Council, City Staff, and all of our residents on being named the Classified Employee of the Second Quarter. Congratulations. And Lieutenant Kohler, would you care to say a few words?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to take a couple of quick moments to expand a little bit on what Councilman Cabrera had to say about Sarah. She joined our team just a little more than two years ago, and very quickly became an integral part of our clerical operation here in Moreno Valley, which is definitely by a long shot one of the busiest operations within the Sheriff's Department in terms of patrol. And fortunately, we were able to promote her within her current assignment late this summer, and have been able to hang on to her and continue to take advantage of everything that she has to offer, which is a team and a can-do attitude every day that benefits both our officers that are supporting her in the back of the room, as well as her coworkers. So, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I'm honored to receive this award. I'm very thankful for this job in the City of Moreno Valley, and I am proud to work for the Riverside Sheriff Department. I want to thank the amazing leadership we have at the station under Lieutenant Commander Lilliver and Lieutenant Kohler. A special thanks to my family for always supporting me. This is my second career, and it was kind of hard for me to get back out there, but I'm really glad that I'm here. So, thank you again.
Congratulations to Sarah Tranham. The final presentation is recognition of the Officer of the Second Quarter. If we can have Deputy Dustin Getz, please come up to the mic. Come on up, team. Wonderful. Good evening. On behalf of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, it is my honor to recognize Deputy Dustin Getz as the Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Second Quarter. Deputy Getz, would you please join me? He's here. Deputy Getz works directly with the Moreno Valley Sheriff's Robbery and Burglary Suppression Team, which is our A-Team, and our businesses really, really appreciate this team. He is consistent in providing assistance throughout the department while going beyond the department's expectations. When time permits, Deputy Getz trains patrol personnel on investigative techniques and laws that directly affect the community. He also takes the time to meet with local business owners and provide them with information on crime prevention techniques. One of the highlights of Deputy Getz, his hard work paying off this quarter, is the conclusion of a lengthy investigation involving a home invasion robbery. Deputy Getz was able to identify suspects, serve search warrants, and obtain a full confession by utilizing advanced interrogation techniques. This led to the arrest of the suspects who ultimately pled guilty and will now serve a 24-year sentence in prison. So, that's going to keep them off our streets, right? Deputy Getz is a great example of hard work and dedication to the Moreno Valley Sheriff's Department and to the safety of Moreno Valley residents. Deputy Getz, it is my pleasure to provide you with this well-deserved certificate of recognition for being named Officer of the Second Quarter 2019. The City of Moreno Valley is quite fortunate to have such an exceptional person watching over our community. Congratulations.
Not really much for public talking, but first, thank you for the city, for this honor. I appreciate it. My department, thank you to the department, it's humbling. To be honest, there should be more of these given out, for sure. My boys and I work hard, and it's not just us, the rest of the set team, we all work hand-in-hand in order to get whatever objectives that we're trying to get accomplished. So, thank you for everybody. Most importantly, we spend a lot of time away from our families when we do a lot of work, so thank you to my wife Rebecca and to my kids, I love you guys.
It's with great honor that I present to Deputy Getz an engraved with his name and ID number, so nobody can make the mistake of picking up his handcuffs, but a nice pair of handcuffs for him. Give those to you, sir. And a few of the talking points on Deputy Dustin Getz, I mean, he's been out here in Moreno Valley for about a half a dozen years now. He worked patrol, he was a hard charger on patrol, he was a hard charger on our problem-oriented policing team. From there, we brought him over to the robbery suppression team, burglar robbery suppression team, and he's done an outstanding job at each of those. He's a team player, and he has been since he's been here. I can't give enough gratitude and enough honor for him because he does a great job, he's a great officer, great law enforcement officer, and he's, as you can see, he wanted his teammates up here because he's not the kind of guy that wants to take all the credit because it's a team effort. And almost everything these guys do is a team effort, including all this Motley Crue back here with the green outfits on, they're part of the team, too. And I say that for Dustin because I know that he wants everybody included. But this is about him tonight because he has done such a great job, and he's very deserving of the Officer of the Quarter. Thank you.
Congratulations Deputy Dustin Getz, and let's give him another round of applause. Thank you to you and to your team. And that concludes the special presentations. The regular council meeting will convene at 6:00 PM. Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. Today is November 19th, 2019, and it's 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Cabrera, and please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Gabriel Alfonso Perez from Iglesia Nueva Vida de Moreno Valley.
Good evening. Would everyone please join me in the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes tengan todos ustedes. Es un honor de estar aquí en esta tarde con ustedes. Soy pastor Gabriel del aquí de Moreno Valley, y me han pedido, ¿verdad?, de que los introduzcan una oración. ¿Por qué no inclinamos nuestros rostros en esta tarde? Padre, te damos gracias, Señor Jesús, Dios de la gloria, por todo lo que tú estás haciendo, Señor. Te pedimos, Padre mío, Señor, que tú bendiga, Señor Jesús, Dios de la gloria. De sabiduría, Señor Jesús, a este pueblo, Dios mío, Señor. A todos, Señor Jesús, los que dirigen esta ciudad, Padre Santo. En el nombre poderoso de Jesús, te pido, Dios mío, que los bendigas, Señor, les de sabiduría, Señor, para guiar a este pueblo, Señor, en el nombre tuyo, Señor. A ti se la honra, la gloria, Padre Santo. Amén, y amén, Señor.
Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mayor Gutierrez is absent.
Okay, staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Renee Bryant, Management Aid.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kuzanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Patty Nevens, Acting Community Development Director.
Dave Lilliver, Acting Commander.
Abdul Alm, Park.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Patty Solano Parks, and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you so much. Just a reminder that Item G2 has been removed from tonight's agenda. The city is currently offering Spanish translation services, so if you need them, the translators are at the back of the room. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone to participate to keep their comments respectful towards others, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. Do we have any public comments, City Clerk?
None.
None, okay. There's one. Please step up to the podium. Good evening, Ms. Polomars, you have three minutes.
Hello, Louise Polomars, city activist, and helps out a lot in the community here. Okay, I wanted to address the council today about all what happened at the last council meeting, it was great. All the things that are going forward and all the things we're trying to make happen here in the city, wow, I can't say enough. It's, wow, we're rolling. We're doing great. And I know we won another award, I believe. I don't remember which one it was, I seen that the mayor posted it, so that's great, too. Also, I'd like to say a shout-out to my grandson, today's his birthday, he's 31, and he's a Marine. And I said to him, "Are you gonna re-enlist, honey?" He goes, "No, Grandma, once a Marine, always a Marine." Now, he's going to Cal Baptist, so he's getting his education there. On another note, I got a couple of calls, this is about a week or so ago, about Councilman, I didn't want to go here, but, oh, wow, Councilman Marquez. He is going around like code enforcement and ticketing people in his district. And I got a couple of calls, and they asked me, "Can he do this?" He has magnets on his truck from the city. How did he get those? And when did he get them? And who gave them to him? Can he do that? Do you want to be a code enforcement officer, or do you want to be a council member? Which one is it? And of course, you'll say, "You don't know what I'm talking about." But somebody took a picture, and maybe I'll blow it up and bring it next time, but I just got wind of this a few days ago. So, I mean, it never ceases to amaze me. Could we get in trouble for this? Are those tickets legal that he's giving out, those citations? Is that a legal thing he can do? Get away with it? Uh-uh, I don't think so. I want to look into it, but I just wanted to bring the council's attention, I don't know if they've gotten any calls here to the city, because I know some people out there, they called me. They want to know if this is legal, can he do this? Is he a code enforcement? Is he a council member? Which one is he? So, they're worrying about, do I gotta pay this ticket? Do I gotta pay it? Or do I gotta, well, it's not to the point that they gotta pay it yet, but do I gotta, you know, take care of it? Because Marquez gave it to them, Councilmember Marquez gave it to them? I don't, I don't, I don't get it. Like I said, he never ceases to amaze me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Polomars. Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time? We're now going to move to our Joint Consent Calendar, Sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the Consent Calendars, Sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Service District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency, the Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees requests that an item be removed for a separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Would anyone like to remove items for a separate action?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to not pull A-7, but I'd like to be on record that my only vote, cast my vote, is a no on A-7, but I will approve of the rest of the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment on A-7. I'm very excited at the plan that we're moving forward with the General Plan Advisory Committee. This provides us to have an advisory committee of representatives from throughout the city. I would ask at a later time that we consider expanding the committee, including individuals from faith-based organizations, healthcare leaders, and a local philanthropic organization. Thank you for your consideration.
Public comments on the agenda items, City Clerk?
Yes, we have two. Angel Lopez and Sean 14, both on Item A-7.
Mr. Angel Lopez? Can you start the timer, please?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, my elected representative, Dr. Thornton, Councilmembers Cabrera, and Marquez. I appeared before you this evening and before the council to offer my remarks on Item A-7. And just for the record, I am not opposed to a general plan advisory committee for creating member appointments, for improving the quality of life to use public lands we have in Moreno Valley, for bringing businesses, improving commerce, building housing, education, et cetera. However, when I look at Item A-7, Number Two, I question the names that I see here as far as ratifying mayoral appointments. And it's no secret, some of the folks listed on Item A-7, Number Two, A and B include contributors of campaigns for some of you on the dais. And then, I also see in Item A-7, Two, C, and D, community members, which are also, you know, folks that are part of the planning commission, so to speak. So, I question these names and how they're listed. And that's why, when I look at this information, and anyone with a pair of eyes can clearly see an egregious conflict of interest. And my remarks here are going to fall on deaf ears, I'll just be frank. And, but I did want to express those remarks nonetheless, exercising my constitutional right to my free speech. And so, Dr. Thornton mentioned including others in the community, like faith-based communities, et cetera. What about Moreno Valley Unified School District? What about education also being added to the general plan advisory committee? Does their voice not matter to be included for potential use of land for future public schools? Just a couple of questions as far as that goes. But nonetheless, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight, and again, I am opposed to Item A-7, Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Sean 14?
Hi. I'm also not opposed to a general plan. Like, I think having the RSC, having Moreno Valley College involved is a good idea. Having people that the mayor has handpicked to basically be his sock puppet is really lame, but not unheard of. It's just petty city politics, so I'm not going to really deal with that one too much. But the problem is that having Pacific Communities and Highland Fairview on the community is one-third of this advisory committee is basically, they're the two biggest campaign contributors to the City Council, and specifically to Mayor Gutierrez. And not only that, but there is no requirement that the people from Highland Fairview or Pacific Communities, or even an actual community member, they can send a lawyer, a consultant, lobbyist, whatever. They are in a real gray area of running afoul of collusion and antitrust laws, and so I decided to ask the DOJ, the federal DOJ, about that, and haven't heard back because, quite frankly, it was a little late on my homework, got notice of this a little slow. But in addition to having faith members, I would recommend removing these two lobbyists basically from the committee. But in addition to Mr. Lopez's recommendations, I would suggest having people that would help to develop, recreate- help to develop recreational uses, especially in the surrounding areas under Moreno Valley's influence that are undeveloped for, for additional use to support the community development. So I hope you'll take that into consideration and maybe revise the, the general plan committee and reconsider it at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fourteen. That concludes the, you have one more? Luis Palomares?
Luis Palomares, wow, everything's a conflict of interest with these ones. But come on, these are people that know what they're doing, and they want to take the city into the 21st century. That's great. We're, we're happy about it. They know what they're doing, they're gonna do their jobs, and, oh wow, the DOJ, he's not even doing his job up there right. If you ask me, that's my opinion. Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palomares. Any other speakers? Okay, that concludes the public comments. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, noting the council member Marquez's no vote on item A7.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by council member Ulysses Cabrera, second by council member Thornton. The consent calendar is approved for zero with one absent. So we're gonna move on to public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the sergeant at arms. Item F1, public hearing for six national pollutant discharge elimination system mail ballot proceedings. Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'll ask Candace Castle, our special districts division manager, to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is a public hearing for six property owner mail ballot proceedings for the national pollutant discharge elimination system. The property owners have requested the city apply a parcel charge on their property tax bill to fund the MPDS program, a requirement of their development projects. Tonight's public hearing is a required part of that process. This action only affects those parcels included on the ballot of the property owners identified in the staff report. Unless there are any questions, staff requests the city council conduct the public hearing and then direct the city clerk to count the ballots.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I see none. The hearing is opened. Do we have any speakers, City Clerk?
None.
Okay, the hearing is closed. I entertain, oh, let's, let's do the counting, the ballots.
The ballot for Via Anet, yes. The ballot for Roman Catholic Bishop, yes. The ballot for the dais of San Bernardino Education and Welfare, yes. Yum Yum Donuts, yes. The second one for Yum Yum Donuts, yes. And then LCG, yes.
Thank you. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, number two, three, and four. A motion by council member Carla Thornton, and a second by council member Ulysses Cabrera. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We go to item G1, general business, Momentum Movel, year three status update. City manager?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm gonna wait for the PowerPoint to, to come up. Good evening, it's my pleasure again to give you, this time, a three-year status update on Momentum Movel, your strategic plan. Momentum Movel is a five-year plan of the city's top priorities. The plan was kicked off in August of 2016, and your team has been working hard ever since and highly focused on your six priorities. Those priorities are economic development, public safety, a library, infrastructure, beautification, and youth programs. Momentum Movel is built on this strong foundation and supported through specific initiatives, over 160 initiatives or action items to achieve council's goals. The commitment and determina, determinations, excuse me, by staff has resulted in 100% success rate to date, I'm happy to say. Truly remarkable when we look at the volume and the features of each of these incentives completed, excuse me. This, by the way, is a total of 155 initiatives completed so far, and as I mentioned earlier, completed on time. So we have 100% completion rate. And I'd like to highlight a couple of the prominent actions that staff has completed since our last update, but before I do, just wanted to share some of the, a quick breakdown of where the work has taken place over this past year. Staff touched areas of economic development, infrastructure, and beautification. And the first, first initiative I'd like to talk about is initiative 4.2.5, which kicked off efforts for a comprehensive infrastructure needs assessment. Capital Improvement Plan, including a comprehensive review of public improvements, needs consistent with the general plan, and city-approved related master plans, was prepared and approved by the council back in June. The CIP provides a focus, a funding focus for the next two years, and a look ahead for the next five years. And yet to be funded long-range planning infrastructure needs for the city, all the way out to our ultimate build-out. This was, I have to mention, a total team effort. Every department was involved in the creation of this, of this plan. Up next is initiative 5.2.2, developed a comprehensive gateway and streetscape framework plan. This will serve as a guide to establish gateway entrances that welcome the visitors to, welcome visitors to Moreno Valley, reinforce a positive sense of space, and connect people with economic opportunities in Moreno Valley. The document outlines the city's gateways and portal streets and their current conditions, and identifies opportunities for improvements. Goals within this framework include a vision for attractive entries into the city, reinforce our image of high-quality develop, high-quality development, and communicate our vision to other agencies. You should have received a very nice, multi-page packet brochure in your offices with the layout of this framework. Very well done by staff. Next initiative, or two, I should say, 5.5, 5.53, opened a dialogue with Riverside County to initiate joint marketing effort for hiking areas, patrols of Box Springs, and work together to provide trail cleanup opportunities for our residents. And if you recall, our last, not, not the last cleanup day, but the one before, we had Box Springs area was, was one of our locations. Staff also completed 5.5.4 that looked to promote the San Yostal Wildlife Area as a destination for Movel residents. Our Parks and Community Services Team added the area to our recently-launched Interactive Parks map, and I suggest that the, the residents of Moreno Valley really check, go check that out on our website, it's fantastic, and highlight the amenities for wildlife viewing and hiking in this area. And lastly, initiative 6.2.7 was developed to actively engage community groups for their support of our youth programs. The Parks and Community Services Team has and continues to reach out and encourage their attendance, not just as sponsors, but providing information on how to get involved. I'm happy to report that the community support and sponsorship for youth programs is at an all-time high, and that's thanks to our Parks and Community Services Team. And just in closing, I'd like to say that staff will continue to, its commitment and effort to address the remaining list of important initiatives targeted for completion in years four and five that are coming up. A couple of those are biggies, if I may say. The general plan update, of course, is one of those, along with a healthy element. So there's still some big tasks for staff to complete, and we look forward to getting those done by the, the end of Momentum Movel. And that concludes my report.
Go ahead, Tom.
Mayor Protem, and members of the council, just a couple of quick comments. Momentum Movel is something that is very different, it's very special, for a couple reasons. One, it's, it's breadth. It really encompasses a broad vision of the council, as far as, as our strategic initiatives. But the other thing that makes it very different from any plans you'd see in any other organization is that it has over 160 specific measurable outcomes, specific tasks and deadlines. That's unusual for a strategic plan. Most places spend a lot of time, they think, they dream, and they put it on the shelf. The way this is set up under the council's leadership is for full accountability. So we, as a staff, are accountable to you to deliver all of the items on this thing by the schedule, just as we, as an organization, are accountable to the community. So we're really, really proud of this, we're grateful for the mayor's intense interest in Momentum Movel, and for your leadership as a governing body to keep us on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council to staff? Okay, wow, thank you for that great report. Public comments? How many? You need to stay at the front.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, A-plused, again, three years, and all you've done in three years. You know, who could ask for a better mayor than this? So young and going, running with, running with it all. And the council, the staff, and I'm excited. We get an A-plus report card here. We have done so much in the three years with this council, and the staff, and the community helping out also. And you know, we'll always have the nasers, but who cares? We get an A-plus, and we got the proof. We got the proof. And all that's coming with the general plan next, wow, that's another one coming over the horizons. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of things in there for the students, 'cause you never leave the students out, you're always there for the community kids here, and I thank you for that also. Last time, at the last meeting, Tom said about, you know, the, the, you know, the money that people are making now, eighty-something thousand now, compared to sixty-something, it went up like twenty thousand a year? That all has to do with what's going on right now in these three years that we've been running. We've been running to make the city a better city, and I can't commend the staff enough. I mean, I don't think everybody agrees 100% on everything, but still, they work together what they do agree with, and it's a big thing, 'cause it's bigger than them, and it's bigger than the council, and it's bigger than all of us. It's about our city. It's about our city. And I thank you again, and I commend you again, and keep up the good work, and don't stop. We got two more years, you know, to finish the whole thing, and hey, keep on going with it, because there's nothing but good news coming out of this council. I mean, we're talked about in other communities, in other cities, they call, wow, look what's going on over there. You know, look what you're doing in, in your city, your mayor, your council, your staff. Wow, thank you, thank you again.
That takes us to item I, city council reports, and I believe that March Joint Powers Commission is the only report. Anybody else have a report? No? Okay. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on November 13th. At that meeting, the commission approved a proposal to rezone approximately 75,000 square feet of approved but not yet constructed office space into approximately 92,000 square feet of business park along the north side of Van Buren and western Meridian Parkway. And that brings us to council comments at the end. Councilwoman Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to thank the city staff for putting on an amazing Veterans Day ceremony. I've been to a lot of Veterans Day ceremonies, and I have to say that, you know, we cover everything from having a great choir, we give out awards, we had a decent speaker this year, and, thank you, no, sure. No, but I, I just want to commend all the hard work that the city staff has gone into, and I want to thank my colleagues on the council for continuing to support this important recognition of our veterans. Also, I want to give a shout out to Public Works for all of the improvements they've been making to the streets as the rainy season is beginning. We'll see the improvements slowing down, but in District Two alone, I've seen drastic improvements on our streets, entire roads have been repaved, and I know many of the residents are very grateful for the work that Public Works has put in, and look forward to seeing more improvements come next summer. Also, I just wanted to just reiterate to the community that with us moving forward with this general plan, which we are very excited about, there's gonna be lots of room and opportunity for our residents to be actively involved. We'll be holding mini forms, town hall forms. Additionally, you'll be able to go to the planning commission and make comments, in addition to city council meetings. So please look out for some of these forums to come and speak to us about your viewpoint on how the general plan and what should be included in that. So even though the general plan advisory committee is just, that's just one arm and one tool that we're using, there's gonna be lots of other opportunity. And lastly, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please do not drink and drive. Please put your cell phones down while you're driving and pay attention. We want everyone to enjoy that day and get home safely and enjoy the weekend. Thank you so much.
Councilman Marcus.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, I want to say to staff, great job again, awesome. I mean, what else can we really say about our staff? Every time we ask them to do something top-notch, 100%, and I am proud to say that I work along with them, thank you again, appreciate it. Secondly, I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey. Be safe out there. Don't drink and drive. Don't smoke and drive. And no cell phones. And third, a speaker accused me of writing citations. That's new to me. If anybody out in the public has received a citation with my name on it, please turn it in, not to me, not to the city manager, turn it in to the city attorney. Please. If I have a citation that I have ever issued code enforcement, please send it to the city attorney for prosecution. Unbelievable, somebody can accuse me of something like that, but what can you expect at this time, next year elections? So, other than that, good night to everybody, and we'll see you next meeting.
Councilman Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a few comments here. First, I would like to remind everyone that this Friday, there's an event here at the rec center, it's the Moreno Valley Region Economic and Workforce Development Summit. And so, it's an exciting event, because we get to gather around and go through all of the accomplishments that we've actually had here in our city. And not just Moreno Valley, but working in partnership with surrounding cities and other organizations and larger agencies. So it's really showcasing and putting a spotlight on all of the economic growth that we've had. Earlier, one of our public commenters mentioned an increase in income and the new types of jobs as well, the shift from blue-collar jobs to a lot more white-collar jobs here. Last, last week, we had a ribbon cutting for La Grande over in District Four. It was, it's a beautiful facility, more jobs that are coming here, higher wage jobs, and it's just beautiful to see, to learn more about, you know, where jobs, and, uh, it's just beautiful to see, to learn more about, you know, where these, uh, products are manufactured, where they come from, what stores they're delivered to, and here locally, you know, so the money is able to circulate here in our community as well. And I, I do wanna commend our economic development team, our planning staff, and everyone for continuing this process of bringing development to our city, when a lot of other areas are honestly struggling, and businesses are closing down. Here, businesses are going up, and so, I just wanna acknowledge that for our staff. Um, also, um, I do wanna make a few comments on some items on today's agenda. The first, first is, uh, A seven, the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee. Um, I won't reiterate too many things, but, uh, I also, um, I'm open to that idea, and actually look forward to adding a few more, whether it's organizations or individuals, um, to give their input. Uh, for example, you have Lake Paris, which is gonna be home to some of the Olympic Games, um, later, uh, in about a decade or so. But they also have their marina that they're redoing, and they've had conversations about that, so it's important to bring those kinds of stakeholders into our general plan update. Also, the school districts, you have MVUSD, you have Valverde Unified, you have the March Joint Powers Authority as well, which is, is pretty much Moreno Valley. Um, it's, uh, we like to claim it as, as our own, but you also have the hospitals, you have RUHS, and you have Kaiser, which are major stakeholders here in our city. Uh, they're currently expanding, adding new beds, adding more jobs, so, uh, as a, uh, as a medical hub here, it's important that we bring them to the table as well, because they have big plans for the future in terms of expansion. So those are just a few that I, I, I really look forward to adding to this process, and as council member Thornton mentioned, there's gonna be a lot of opportunities over the next several months for, uh, community members, for any residents to come to our study sessions, to come to town halls, to give your input, and to also look at all of our plans, and to see, because this is, this is for the next fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years of how do we want our city to look at that time. So it's important that, I mean, we have the opportunity to give our input, and let us know what it is that you want to see as well. So, uh, definitely look forward to seeing you all at those meetings, and please, spread the word to your neighbors, 'cause it's important that we get people out here and get involved. So, uh, please help us to spread the word, we'd appreciate that. Um, also, item A four, uh, it's the library, um, really, really excited about this one, it's gonna be over in District Four as well. It's, it's actually gonna be in an area that I believe has been, uh, somewhat underserved, uh, for a while, and so, it's, it's, um, you know, I, I, I welcome it, and I look forward to its opening sometime in the summer of next year, uh, because although we don't really oversee education, uh, that's part of our role as government, educating the public, and we can do that through the opening of a new satellite library. And so, I'm hoping that, um, a- a- as we go through the process, we can also bring in, and if it's in the form of donations, uh, hopefully, things like 3D printers, and laser cutters, and drones, to expose our youth in particular, but, but everyone as well, uh, to those new technologies to really help, uh, our residents, and help all of you acquire some of these skills, and really, um, make sure that we're all keeping up to speed with the, where the economy is currently going, and the jobs that are coming in the future that pay higher wages, so that we can all prepare ourselves and acquire that education and the knowledge and that information, right, to be at the forefront of this industrial revolution that we're currently going through. Um, so just wanna say, thank staff, uh, for that library as well. Road repairs, uh, won't say too much about it, but, uh, from now through, through January, we have more road repairs coming, so look out for those, very exciting. Um, I also wanna give a shout-out to Mountain Mike's Pizza over, uh, in my district on Iris and La Cell. Uh, a lot of businesses for the holidays, especially Thanksgiving, uh, give donations in terms of, uh, usually food. Uh, so Mountain Mike's Pizza donated 25 pizzas to a local food pantry here in Moreno Valley, and everyone was extremely happy. Uh, it was pretty early in the morning for pizza, but, I mean, is it really ever a bad time for pizza? I would say no. But, uh, just wanna give them a shout-out and thank them for doing that, so. Other than that, uh, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, enjoy the time with your family, um, eat some of those home-cooked recipes on my behalf, please, and, uh, everyone enjoy your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cabrera. Okay, well, I, I just wanna say that I'm really elated about having the General Plan Advisory Committee, um, on track, and will follow the next steps, and I know that with, uh, our leadership and our, our, um, staff, that it's gonna, you know, hit the ground running, and I look forward to the public's input, and everyone that, uh, has something to say, there will be opportunities. Please come to the meetings, uh, watch online, keep on Facebook, the city's webpage, uh, stay tuned to what's going on with, with this, um, event, because it's, uh, every ten years, and it's overdue, and I know that a lot of people are looking forward to the changes that are coming to our city. I wanna say thank you to everyone that comes to the special presentation section of the, um, city council, it's at 5:30, and, um, today was a, a full room, and standing room only, and I, I just, um, feel very good when we have such an audience, because these people go over and beyond the call of duty, and they stand out, and that's why we recognize them, and I know that, uh, to me, it's one of the best parts of the council meeting. And I thank everyone for supporting the awardees. There's an agency on postal, it's called The Hole in the Wall, and they provide a lot of, um, services to the, um, homeless people in our community, and they have classes, they have rehab, they find people clothes, housing, jobs. So they're having a fundraiser, or a Thanksgiving dinner, I should say, on, to November 30th, so if anyone can come out and help donate to this agency, it would be very, very appreciated. And, um, that concludes my remarks, so I, I wanna step off to the city managers' report and the city attorneys' reports.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, just best wishes to the council and the community for a Happy Thanksgiving, we have very much to be thankful for in this community. Thank you.
I can only echo that. Best wishes to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our city council meeting. Good night.